Good evening. I'm Rick Mason and this is the September Lake Mills Board of Education meeting. Our mission statement is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. Verification of meeting notice?
The agenda was submitted to the Lake Mills leader on August 29th and then posted at the library, the post office, and the bank of Lake Mills, as well as the district website. And it was updated on September 5th and reposted at all those locations.
Thank you. I'm going to call the meeting order, and if you'd rise and do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have roll call, please?
Don Delaney?
Here.
Rachel Davies?
Here.
Robert Temprio?
Here.
David Radel?
Here.
Richard Mason?
Here. Any agenda revisions or changes? Could we have a motion to approve the agenda then?
I move approval of the agenda as printed.
Second.
Would you second it to approve the agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same side, and that passes. Board reports. Dr. Delaney.
We received two letters of appreciation from two recent retirees from the district, Monica Yandre and Kate Harrell. And we also, in correspondence, received one note of appreciation from the family of Carol Menzel for the plant received on behalf of Carol's daughter, Joanie, who works for the district.
Good, thank you. The next item is the student board member report. And could we have a swearing in as a board member, please?
So if you would raise your right hand, and you can recite the oath.
I, Megan Paulzine, who has been duly appointed to the Board of Education of the Lake Mills Area School District but have not yet entered upon the duties thereof, swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Wisconsin and will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability. So help me God. Thank you.
Welcome aboard. Do you have a report tonight for us?
Yes, I do, yes. Lake Mills High School has had a very successful start to the school year. Thanks to Link Crew's efforts, the freshmen have had a smooth transition into the high school. The high school's production of Yearntown the Musical is underway with cast rehearsals and set building by the crew. We have had a very successful start to the fall sports season. Volleyball has won their first two conference matches, and they won their tournament in Broadhead this past weekend. The football team is currently 2-1 with a win against Onalaska High School this past Friday at Campus Field. Boy soccer took 3rd in the Bigfoot Invitational, and cross country took 4th place in the Freedom Invitational this past weekend. The students are very excited for the upcoming homecoming celebration. Student council has been working very hard to start organizing the homecoming events. The theme for the 2019 Homecoming Week will be breakfast cereals, and each grade will be picking their cereal and color tomorrow. We are very pleased to be able to bring back the traditions by decorating the windows downtown, campus field, and the hallways in our school. The new classrooms in the high school have made the students very excited for the year. The tech ed, agriculture, and business classrooms have gotten great feedback from the student body. Lastly, Ms. Iverson's business students are starting work to open the brand-new school store hopefully by the end of September.
Good. Thank you, Maggie. You're welcome to stay for this meeting if you'd like to. Otherwise, you're welcome to go also. Okay? You sure? Well, all right. You may change your mind next time. Mr. Temprio?
I'd like to report a little bit on the activity at the high school. The remodeling in Phase 1 has been completed and is currently being occupied, and that includes on the first floor, new business ed classrooms, office space, new restrooms, also the relocated school store. And the principal's office has been moved to the old location of the school store. The corridor from the main entrance leading up to the cafeteria has been carpeted with a type of a walk-off kind of a carpet similar to what is found in the elementary school. The lower level, several tech ed classrooms and laboratories have been completed along with the agricultural lab and classroom. To be completed in Phase 2 are the fitness center and the family and consumer education classroom. Those classes for the latter are being currently conducted in the, what will be the old space for that. As far as the building addition is concerned, structural steel has been completed, the roof deck is on, exterior metal studs are up. The next things in line would be the masonry walls and roofing of that to enable it to be closed in so that the interior work can be completed during the colder and inclement weather. At the new stadium, the turf is almost completed. It is actually pretty impressive, especially if you looked at it with a drone because then you would see the logo on the 50-yard line. Work down there is progressing. The paving, which will occur near the bleacher area, as well as the paving near the new fitness center, that's been graded. Asphalt should be going down in the near future. The stadium will then receive the bleachers, exterior fencing, and hopefully wrapped up before the cold weather hits.
Thank you, thank you. The next item is the Board of Education sets goals for the district each year. And our goals are basically the same as in previous years, and it covers four basic areas. The first one is student achievement through informed decisions about programs, practices, and professional development. The other one, the second one, is communication, open communication with all stakeholders. And the third one is facilities. We keep trying to keep up with the facilities, and seems to be doing pretty well with that right now. But that's something we have to keep up with and maintain, all our facilities. And then the last one is to ensure fiscal responsibility and accountability in the money area. So those are the four goals that the Board will support for the year. All right, administrative reports. Mrs. Thompson, elementary school principal.
Good evening. Just a couple of updates from the elementary school. We are off to a great start this year. We have something new that I've talked to you about before, but wanted to let you know that Playworks has been at our school and at the middle school. During our in-service week, they worked with all of our staff members to introduce the philosophy of safe, healthy, fun play every day. And then worked specifically with our recess team and the recess supervisors, new games for our students to play, new ways to help with conflict resolution. So the students have been having a great time. We've put some new structures in place for our recess equipment, so starting with some of the systems-level support on the playground, which has been great, especially at the end of the day that all of the recess equipment is picked up. We have just enough out there for the games that the students are playing. I gave you information about our student enrollment for this year. We have 616 students, 4K through 4th grade. Last year at this time of the year, we had, or last year at the end of the year, we had 599 students, so a small increase. Tonight, we celebrated our school garden, our harvest party. Was tonight, we had about 100 people who were in attendance. A huge thank you to our garden committee, Mrs. Schrader, our school social worker, has been leading that team for the last year. So she's been a big advocate for our school garden and our playground program, and all of our summer volunteers helped to make tonight possible with maintaining the garden over the summer. And finally, our school theme this year is work hard, dream big. At our kickoff assembly, we talked to our students about how important it is to work really hard towards your goals. It takes a lot of work, and it doesn't always come easy, but this year, that's going to be something that we talk to our students about often, is perseverance and grit. Any questions?
Questions, anybody? Thank you. Mrs. Bauer, middle school principal.
Good evening. Again, it's been a great start at the middle school as well. To reiterate some of the information that Amanda gave you, we have really enjoyed picking up the concepts from Playworks, the teamwork, resolving disputes, making sure everyone is included. The kids are really having a good time out on the playground and incorporating all of those values. Jenna, the person who works for us on the Playworks staff, is already coming tomorrow to start giving us feedback and to explain to the entire staff our Playworks program. Currently, we use it with 5th and 6th grade, but after meeting with them and working with them, we feel it's really important to spread through the entire school. So she will be talking to our staff tomorrow about Playworks. The 5th grade worked hard since the end of last year to implement some strategies that they had seen at the elementary school to make the transition of 5th grade better, including restructuring the schedule for recess time, breaking students into smaller groups for transitions. In concert with Webb, it's been a very smooth and intentionally orchestrated beginning of the year for our new 5th graders. When I surveyed students informally today, most said it was a 9 out of 10, and when I asked them what would make it a 10, they said, oh wait, it's probably a 10. It was great to see the families who came to family night the week before school started. We adjusted the format this year to make it more relaxing, and the feedback we received from families was that they appreciated that effort. You have heard, some of you may have heard, that we are working through the processes for morning drop-off. Like to give you a little bit of a background about what's been happening. Last year, the vast majority of our students began arriving before 7:45 for multiple, multitude of reasons. Bus routes were involved, different things. This hadn't been an issue in the past, and our students didn't really require supervision prior to last year. Cafeteria started getting really full, so we opened the gym, we split the grades by levels. By 7:35, we were getting about 250 kids in the building already. So socially, we noticed this was becoming a very difficult time for kids because they had a full 30 minutes of lightly supervised interactions with one another. And yet, it became the thing to do, like everybody showed up at 7:30 because everybody was there at 7:30. So it just kept building and building. It also necessitated that a multiple, that multiple staff come in by 7:30 to supervise, which means they had to get there between 7:00 and 7:15 to prepare their classrooms to supervise by 7:30 to get to class by 8:05 in their first hours. So staff requested that we move times for this year so students could come in more emotionally settled and so that supervision was not so taxing. So we have the doors remain closed until 7:45 to discourage any students who could possibly come later. I say sleep in, but they still really enjoy that social time. We have also been working with the bus drivers to arrive after 7:45. I have spoken to the walkers and the bike riders about possibly coming later, so we're kind of working on all angles of that. Today, we moved the bus riders and walkers to the back of the building because we still have a bunch of students arriving early, and the congestion at the front of the building where people were dropping off was becoming a big issue, so we moved them to the back of the building. It went well, but we still have a lot of students arriving early. So I notified families several times about the change prior to the start of the school year, and I've gotten about 10 families who have expressed concerns about dropping off their students early, primarily because of the construction and family needs to get across town either to the high school because they have high school students dropping their younger siblings off, or the need to get to work. We hope to have these concerns addressed once we understand the true needs. So once we get the buses ready, you know, coming at the right time, and once we have the walkers convinced that it's too cold to stand outside, then we can address the real issue of, you know, usually it's between 20 and 30 kids who need to come early with their families. So we'll address that once we get the numbers down where we need them. So on that flip side, many staff have commented about the improved morning for both students and staff. Hopefully, by the next board meeting, I will be able to report how the issues have been fully resolved. Numbers for you? So we've, different grade levels, I can give you specific numbers if you want them. I could provide that in the report. But overall, last year, we had a full count of 485 students, and this year, we are currently at 491 students. So again, a slight growth.
Questions at all? What a great problem to have. The students want to be at middle school, and they want to be there early.
They're all wide awake and excited, too.
That's cool.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Vogel, high school principal.
Good evening. Just piggyback on Maggie's comments, the start of the school season or school year's been great. Just finished all our class meetings yesterday, or today with the seniors, so the do's and don'ts have been covered. A lot of things going on at the high school, very busy time. Kids are excited about the construction and the new addition coming and the stuff already in place and the things that'll be ready by January. So again, thank you to you for your hard work and for the community for that gift we have at the high school. I want to start out by giving a special thanks to Renee Mitchell, one of our English teachers who teaches credit recovery during the summer. Not an easy gig, but she does a great job with our students who are needing credit over the summer. So thanks, Renee. I also want to give a special thanks to our Link Crew advisors, Beth Denzine and then Ms. Lindy Oates is here tonight as well for their efforts to welcome our incoming freshman class. A lot of work goes in behind the scenes with that, and really important part to make our newcomers feel welcome in our building. Enrollment numbers quickly this year, total of 449, plus two foreign exchange students who haven't registered yet, and that's down just a tad from 458 last year. But looking at next year's numbers with the big 8th grade class of close to 140 and our senior class this year of 94, we're going to get a pretty big jump next year. So that's our numbers of the last couple of years. I want to give you an update. Our teachers completed or participated in the CISA II workshop, really focusing in on, and this was during in-service, focusing in on improving achievement for our EOL students, and really focusing on comprehension and vocabulary for our EOL students. And really, it kind of aligns with one of our building goals, which I'll talk about next month, really focusing to our EOL learners to do better on their access test. And that was a three-and-a-half-hour workshop that our teachers participated, again, focusing in on vocabulary and comprehension strategies. Also, a part of that is really, it was nice that you could apply a lot of those strategies to universally to the classroom, not just the students who are struggling with English language. One thing, I just wanted to update on our AP scores. We also have our ACT scores from last year, but those are still embargoed for a while yet. But our AP scores, just a reminder, we've been on the AP honor roll at the high school for four consecutive years. Consistently, 70% are better passage rate on those exams. I have specific numbers for you, but I'm just going to, like, in a total, our participation numbers went up as far as the number of tests last year compared to the year previous, 90 to 87, so went up 3. And participation is one of our goals as far as higher participation in kids who take AP tests. Our scores, AP Bio, over 70% passage rate, AP Lit was 100% passage rate, AP Calc was 87% passage rate, which is really high. AP Government, two-point, almost a three-point average with a 57% passage rate, and then AP US History with over a 71% passage rate. So we also had five other AP tests given, Psych AP, or AP Calc BC, Stats, Environmental Science, and Computer Science with a scoring average of 3.8 on those exams. So another congrats to our AP teachers and our students for the work they put in for their scores. Events coming up for us, first homecoming meetings are tomorrow, so let the madness begin, but it's a good time, and it's a great tradition of our community and our building, and looking to have a lot of fun in the fall. So that's all I have.
Questions? Sounds good. Great, thank you. Mrs. Brown, Director of Special Ed and Public Services.
Good evening. As everyone has kind of said, the special education staff also has had a strong start to the year. Fine-tuning just a few things, as you know, as is expected. We're trying to fill a 26.25 hour a week paraprofessional position at the high school, so that is something that we're still continuing to work on. And I just wanted to give you some numbers as well for this year. We are at 219 students with IEPs to start the year, and that's 13.9%. Last year, we were at 218 students, which with the enrollment was at 14.1%, but last year, our highest number of students with IEPs was at 230. Any questions?
Melissa, how does that number compare, the percentage, to the?
About, it's just slightly higher than the state average, but within a percentage, so.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Mrs. Brockert, Director of Business Services.
Good evening. We are in the process of wrapping up all our financial reporting for 2018-19 with the DPI, and the only thing our audit's waiting for is a report from employee trust funds, which we should get in October or so, but otherwise, then our audit report will be all wrapped up as well. I've been focusing actually more on the 2019-20 budget. We're requesting to have a special board meeting later in October. I'm suggesting the 28th, so I'll let you look at your calendars and see if that date works. What we're doing in this next month or so is reviewing our Third Friday count. Trying to think, it's not this Friday, but the following Friday will be our Third Friday. And we're reviewing the equalized aid, the equalized value, private school vouchers, computer aid, and all the other calculations, and finalizing the revenue limit calculation. In October, we'll be presenting then to you some budget adjustments, which in addition to the things I just listed, also include grants and, you know, and the revenue limit calculations. So we've got a lot of things we're involved in this next month.
Questions? All right. Mrs. Strike, District Administrator.
So attached to my report, you'll see my goals for last year and the updates attached. I think that many of the goals were already met mid-year, but I just put some finalized notes on each of them there in the red that you can see. Some of them are carrying on to this next year, but we did meet many of those, and many of those goals were related to the referendum and the communication around that. So it was a very successful year in that way. And then I attached some draft goals for this year, following that same structure, following your categories of achievement, communication, facilities, and finance. And then there's targets attached to those. So if you want to take a look at those, I'm considering those draft, and I'll wait for your feedback this month if you have anything. And then I added another category, just transition, so we can, if you want to take a look at my goals, and let me know how you'd like to proceed on that. I also wanted to share with you the recreation report that's attached, and within that, you'll see as we begin to work with Club 55 under the Recreation Department, you're all invited to September 17th, and anyone in the community is invited to Arlac on September 17th. We're having a band during the day and a catered lunch so that people can see what the facility at Arlac looks like for Club 55. And then just one other thing that I wanted to highlight, now that we were able to share with you those enrollment numbers, they're unofficial. The official enrollment numbers will be that Third Friday that Ms. Brockert just talked about. But remember, we were waiting for those numbers so that we can do salary adjustments to the professional staff. So we'll have a closed session at the next board meeting to review any financial implications of that enrollment and talk about those adjustments to the salary schedule so that we can wrap that into the next budget. Okay?
Where are we with enrollment right now?
So the numbers that were just shared with you, down 7, and we're up 16. But people are still enrolling.
Mm-hmm.
So that Third Friday is really the key. And so then we'll be able to talk about the true budget implications in preparation for the October meeting.
All right, thank you. Community input.
Mr. Klotz from LMEA has asked to speak.
Mr. Klotz, step up.
Do you want some art copies of Mr. E. O.?
I would not mind.
Good evening, Dr. Mason, Mr. Temprio, Dr. Delaney, Ms. Roglitz-Davies, and Mr. Radel. The Lake Mills Education Association is asking you to accept our invitation to meet and confer before you take a vote on any salary changes in October. Four years ago, this district adopted a compensation plan, and part of that plan was always going to be to review it and to make adjustments together. And let me be clear that there's nothing adversarial about saying that our staff who spent careers serving our students deserve to retire with security and dignity, nor in saying that our mid-career educators should want to stay here to mentor our new hires and continue the great culture that we have here in Lake Mills. Our new teachers shouldn't have to get second jobs to make ends meet. We want them focused on their classrooms and our students. In Lake Mills, we have some pretty unique circumstances. We have a supportive team of administrators, and when we have a disagreement, we sit down and we talk it out. We discuss policy and handbook changes with our administration and our board, and we improve learning in Lake Mills in positive and collaborative ways. Let's continue that by opening a dialogue about teacher salary. Our diminished buying power is just another issue that we can solve together, and we hope that you'll accept our invitation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, consent agenda. Let me just read what's under the consent agenda. Approval of August 12th, regular Board of Education minutes. Approval of August 12th Finance Committee proceedings. Approval of vouchers and invoices. Approval of Treasury report. Approval of support staff resignations. Approval of support staff letters of assignment. Does anyone want to pull anything out of there? All right, then I'll take a motion to approve.
I move the Board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Would you second it to approve the consent agenda? Can we have a roll call, please?
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Temprio?
Aye.
David Radel?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Action items. Approval of professional staff retirement.
You have a letter attached for retirement at the end of the school year.
Who is this person? Wouldn't like to make a motion, anybody? Well, nobody's going to make a motion. So, next item. All right, I guess so.
I move the Board approve the professional staff retirement of Ms. Pamela Strike, District Administrator, at the end of the 2019-2020 school year, and thank her for the 20 years of service, dedication, and leadership in the Lake Mills Area School District. We congratulate her on her upcoming retirement.
Second.
Would you second it to approve a staff retirement? Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Temprio?
Aye.
David Radel?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Reluctantly, aye. That passes unanimously. Approval of professional staff resignation.
As I mentioned at the last board meeting, we have one professional staff resignation, and we have actually filled that position as well, so you'll see that coming up next. But it's for Ms. Brzanik from the elementary school.
Motion, please.
I move the Board approve the professional staff resignation of Ms. Nicole Brzanik and assess all employee handbook delineated fines.
Second.
Would you second to approve the professional staff resignation? Questions or comments on that? Roll call, please.
Robert Temprio?
Aye.
David Radel?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of professional and staff contract for the 1920 school year.
So you might recognize this name because just last month, you approved this person as a part-time para working in our office. And so when we had the late resignation of Ms. Brzanik, we actually asked Lisa Lutz if she'd like of Ms. Brzonik, we actually asked Lisa Lutz if she'd like to be considered for the position, and so we'd like to offer that one-year contract to her. She's an experienced teacher who's just returning to the, to the education field, and she happened to just be a couple feet away. So, she, she is working for us already and doing a fabulous job, and really excited to be in Lake Mills School District in that capacity.
Right. Motion, please.
I move the board to approve the professional staff contract for Ms. Lisa Lutz, third-grade teacher, and welcome her to the Lake Mills Area School District.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve professional staff contract. Questions on that? Roll call, please.
David Radell?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert DiImperio?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of professional staff contract addendum.
So, last month, I shared with you that we, when Ms. Seabird left us in the role of Curriculum Director and Pupil Services, we reorganized the administrative team. And at that time, it was decided that we were going to reorganize to add an Assistant Principal and Summer School Director position. And so, we did that, and we reassigned many duties to the rest of the administrative team. And one of the very, very large components that we need to take care of is the role of the Director of Curriculum Instruction. And so, Ms. Thompson has agreed to take that on as an addition to her elementary school position for one year. We're gonna try it. We think that it's a tremendous responsibility. And so, we have, we are offering this stipend to her as compensation for all the extra time that's gonna have to happen, pretty much outside her already full workday. And so, we're recommending the stipend of fifteen thousand dollars.
Motion, please.
I move the board to approve the amendment to the contract of Ms. Amanda Thompson in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars for the additional role of Director of Curriculum to her existing full-time position for the two thousand nineteen-two thousand twenty school year.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Dr. Delaney?
Yes, that was a second.
Okay. Any questions or comments on that? Roll call, please.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert DiImperio?
Aye.
David Radell?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of Volume Twenty-Eight, Number Two, Policy Updates and Revisions.
Last month, Dr. Mason shared that the Policy Committee had reviewed and looked at all the updates and recommended revisions from Neola, and we considered last month the first reading. You had all, you have all of those, all those materials before you, and so this would be the vote, so that they can officially be amended.
Okay, motion, please.
I move the board to approve the Volume Twenty-Eight, Number Two, Neola Policy Updates and Revisions as presented at the August twelfth-two thousand nineteen Regular Board of Education meeting.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve the policy updates. So, any questions or comments on that? Because that's pretty lengthy, but those are minor revisions overall. There's a lot of them, so if you'd like to read that, that'd give you something to do before you go to bed at night.
Well, we had an opportunity last month to, to look at those, and the time intervening to review them, so I think we're all good.
We're all good to go. Roll call, then.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert DiImperio?
Aye.
David Radell?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, that passes unanimously. Approval of early graduation requirements.
Requests. There's three of them this, this year, or this month. And you might not recognize one name because it's a person who's openly enrolled to us in JEDI. So, we're recommending, Mr. Vogel has reviewed all of these and recommend that all three be approved.
I move the board to approve the three early graduation requests as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the early graduation requests, and they've been approved, Mr. Vogel, and reviewed? All right. Any questions or comments on that? Good. Roll call, please.
Robert DiImperio?
Aye.
David Radell?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of lease agreement with Arlac and the Lake Mills Recreation Department for the nineteen-twenty school year.
So, as the Recreation Department has moved forward in working with Club Fifty-Five, they have, are in the process of exploring moving to, to Arlac. And so, we are asking that we enter into a trial lease for six months to rent not only what's called the Fort Health Room at Arlac, but also open up the possibility of people who belong to Club Fifty-Five to use all the different facilities within Arlac during the hours that the senior center, Club Fifty-Five, is open at that, at site. So, the, what you see before you is the lease, it's for six months, and then we'll all review that at that time to see if, if that's a workable option for both parties.
I move the board to approve the lease agreement with Arlac and the Lake Mills Recreation Department for the two thousand nineteen-two thousand twenty school year.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the lease agreement with Arlac. Questions on that? We discussed that earlier, so everybody understands. Roll call, please.
David Radell?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert DiImperio?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approve overnight school trips for the two thousand twenty-one school year.
So, by policy, these trips need to be approved a year in advance, so the, the trips that you see before you are for the Fine Arts Weekend and also for the Senior Music Trip during the two thousand twenty-twenty-one school year.
I move the board to approve the following overnight trips for the two thousand twenty-two thousand twenty-one school year, Fine Arts Weekend and Senior Music Trip. It is understood that the board will incur no cost and will accept no liability for any funds lost for any reason.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the trips. Can you just reiterate where they're gonna be?
Oh, I'm sorry. So, Fine Arts goes to Spring Green. Ms. Morris is here. That's her trip that she can talk to you about. And then, the Senior Music Trip is going to go to Milwaukee. Good? Oh, you know, the one that's attached is actually the, it's the, it's the, it's the fall of two thousand, so we have the wrong one attached. So, that's the Florida trip in, right, two thousand nineteen, sorry. We'll have to redo that next month. Get the right one attached. It's the Florida trip in the spring of two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, so let's, let's do that again. What are we approving?
So, you're, we're gonna have to, we're going to need to amend that motion to only approve the Fine Arts Trip at this time. We'll have to redo the, the music trip for two thousand twenty-one, because that's the Florida trip, and that's not the one that's attached.
Okay, that's, so just the Fine Arts Trip?
Yes.
Okay, so we needed an amendment to that?
The person that made the motion could.
Who made the motion?
I did. So, I amend the motion to read that we approve the overnight trips for the two thousand twenty-two thousand twenty-one school year, but that's next year. This is for Fine Arts for twenty?
Twenty, twenty-one, yep.
This says, okay, September twenty, okay, got it. Yes, let me start again. I amend that to read just the Fine Arts Weekend, that we approve the overnight trip for the Fine Arts Weekend, and understand that the board will incur no cost and will accept no liability for any funds lost for any reason.
Second.
Second, okay. Moved and seconded to approve the overnight trip for the Fine Arts Weekend only.
In Spring Green, Wisconsin.
In Spring Green.
Yes.
Any questions, comments on that? Everybody knows what we're gonna vote on? Okay, roll call, please.
David Radell?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert DiImperio?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of physical therapy agreement with Fort Healthcare.
So, as you recall, earlier in the summer, Ms. Mary DeJackamo resigned as our physical therapist, and that's a very, very difficult position to fill. And although we posted, we weren't able to find anyone to apply for that. And so, we would like to enter into contract with Fort Healthcare to provide physical therapy services for our students this school year. And that's just a one-year agreement, and we have a potential other contract for the following year that we can share with you at a later date.
Motion, please.
I move the board to approve the physical therapist agreement between Fort Healthcare and the Lake Mills Area School District for the two thousand nineteen-two thousand twenty school year.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve a physical therapist through the Healthcare at Fort Ankinson. Questions on that? Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert DiImperio?
Aye.
David Radell?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of Wisconsin Public Education Network.
So, last month in Finance Committee, we talked about this request for us to join WPE, and this is the statewide organization that Cape is a member of. And as we know, the Citizen Advocates for Public Education in Lake Mills is, is just a leader in the state of Wisconsin as far as a community working to, to advocate for public education. And so, they, we have asked to bring this forward, to talk about your willingness to join and become a member of this. Their recommendation is a per pupil cost, so they are recommending that our membership fee be five hundred and ninety-seven dollars. I know that you could amend that amount any way you might see fit.
I move the board to approve the membership for the Wisconsin Public Education Network for five hundred and ninety-seven dollars for the two thousand nineteen-two thousand twenty school year.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the membership for Wisconsin Public Education Network in the amount of five hundred and ninety-seven dollars. All right, questions or comments on that?
That's based on a base, and then plus a per pupil. Is that right? There's a base of like two hundred dollars?
The base is two hundred dollars, and then they assess twenty-five cents per student to make that such an odd amount.
Reasonable to me.
Any other questions? My understanding is that we have interest in that locally, correct?
Yes, very much so.
Any questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Robert DiImperio?
Aye.
David Radell?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of grant from the Greater Watertown Community Health Foundation.
So, we've alluded to this several times, but we're really excited to work with the Watertown Community Health Foundation in a number of projects, and the most recent grant that we have received from them is to support Playworks Active Recce, Active Recce program at both the elementary school and, and early middle school. And that grant is in the amount of thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars.
I move the board to accept the grant from the Greater Watertown Community Health Foundations in the amount of thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars to implement Playworks Active Recce. Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the health grant from Watertown. Questions on that? That's just terrific. Roll call, please.
David Radell?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert DiImperio?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of gifts. Mr. Radell?
I'm getting there. I move the board to accept the following gifts and thank the generous donors for their continued support of the students and programs of the Lake Mills Area School District. One hundred seventy-three dollars from donation buckets placed at the Lake Mills covers, culvers to the high school FFA, hand tools donated by Ms. Dolores Elliott in the high school, to the high school's Technology Department in the estimated value of two hundred dollars, three hundred dollars from the Bank of Lake Mills for district-wide school supplies, five hundred dollars from the Lake Mills City Band to the high school's Music Department, Moravian Church's donation of school supplies in the estimated amount of five hundred dollars, Crystal Farms' donation of cheese for the new staff, Badger Truck Center's donation of twenty-one free oil changes for the new staff, Martin Lyra's donation of a hot chocolate mix and machine for the FFA's concession stand in the amount of three thousand dollars, and an anonymous donation to the school backpacks in excess of one thousand.
Second.
Moved and seconded. And again, we appreciate all of the gifts, donations, and whatnot.
Um, we don't have a value of the amount of cheese that Crystal Farms donated, but it filled our refrigerator to the brim, so it was a tremendous.
Amount of cheese.
Yeah, way, 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 way over a hundred dollars worth of cheese.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Yeah, okay. Moved and seconded to approve all the, all the gifts. Roll call, please.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert DiImperio?
Aye.
David Radell?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Upcoming, upcoming board agenda items.
So, it seems strange to be talking about the October meeting already, but remember, every year, we honor longevity awards, and this year, it'll be Lorelei Krieger for twenty-five years, and Kathy Willean for thirty years, so we'll have a reception prior to our meeting for their family and friends, and then we'll talk about them here at the meeting. At that time, too, we want to talk about, about the professional staff, changes to that salary schedule. And then, just a reminder that we would like to meet on Monday, October twenty-eighth at six o'clock.
Does that work?
Does that work for people? And that will be to actually go over the budget and set the levy.
I may or may not be there. Not sure yet.
But is six o'clock the best time? Or the preferred time? You could keep it at seven o'clock, whatever your pleasure is.
Six?
Six o'clock is probably better.
Rachel, six?
Six, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, great.
And next month, we'll have facts and figures, right? Enrollment?
Yes, yep. We won't find out our equalized aid until the fifteenth.
Right.
The day after our meeting.
A motion to adjourn to executive session?
Doesn't Bob usually take care of it?
I move to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eighty-five, pren-one, pren-e, deliberating, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conducting other specific public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session.
Second.
Moved and seconded to go to exec, executive session, session. Roll call, please.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert DiImperio?
Aye.
David Radell?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. We're in executive session.